7:34 and I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Pound Ridge Library Board of Trustees. And I especially want to welcome the new trustees and thank you for your interest in running and thank you in advance for your commitment. So, so, so welcome. The first thing we do, I'm, so I'm Anne Benefico, by the way, it was the, I've been on the board this, I'm going into my sixth year. Okay, so I've had five years and I've served as secretary for two years. And there's kind of a gap in between the previous meeting and now, now with the new trustees coming, the previous trustees leaving. And so as secretary, the only, I was the only officer. So I'm acting, I'm winging it as president tonight. And Jennifer Coulter, our director, is going to help with doing the minutes, which is usually what I do. And for any, you know, just so you know, minutes is kind of like a multi-step process. You take notes, you can review on Zoom the following day, and then, and then you write them up. So, so that's where we're at. So I'm gonna, I'm going to, to take attendance, and I'll just go around. Bob Bellhaus, Lexi Gallo Cook, Jenna Weiss. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just read, okay, so it's Christina, I want to get the name correct. Christina, you go as Christina Sassy Laner, is that correct? Okay. And Marvin Markowitz. Okay. Valerie Shiva Silverman, and Richard Essman. Okay. So we have a quorum for the, for the evening. And that basically just means if we vote on anything, we have, we have enough, enough votes. So the first order of business, what we do is we approve the minutes from the previous meeting. And I think, I think Jennifer had shared some of the minutes with you just to acclimate yourself. You, you, you know, you weren't here, so I'm going to ask someone from this side to, to approve the minutes from the September 15th board meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for the September 15th board meeting.
Thank you, Lexi.
Second?
Okay. So Lexi made the motion, Jenna seconded. All in favor? We say aye. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. We generally meet once a month. Usually it's, it's the third week and there's a reason for that because a lot of the financials come in. There's no set night. For years it was Thursday night, then we kind of moved it to Tuesday night, Wednesday night. So what we try and do, but it is once a month. The meetings do start at 7:30. That, that's been the history. And you know, and that could change if we wanted to move it up a little. So what I'd like to do is, if we could, if you're prepared, if we could pick a night for next, next month. And you know, we, I'm not sure if anyone travels for business or works in the city or if this, if this was convenient, a convenient time, 7:30. So we would be looking at, oh, and, oh, and next month is Thanksgiving. So we run into Thanksgiving, right Jennifer? When is, when is that? Is that the, is it the 28th? Oh, 27, sorry. Okay, so we, so we, no, I'm hoping, you know, maybe we could do it sometime the week of the 17th. Does that work? Does anyone have a preference to the night of the week? I know Lexi, I know you're, you're busy with work. Thursdays are rich, but I can accommodate other days generally. We have programs. Oh, okay. So now, for those of you don't know, the library's open late Thursday nights. That's right, I forgot. You know what, and then we can work that out. It's something, you know, that's something we can discuss. So we were looking at Thursday the 20th, which isn't good for, for, for our late night library hours. So does Wednesday the 19th work? We can all go home and look at our calendars, but let's just put, does, does that sound better, Jennifer? What time, we close what, at 8 o'clock on Thursday nights? Alright, so Wednesday, the 19th, for next month's meeting. And, and for the new trustees, you noticed that, I think you got an email with a link to all the material bills, and you'll get that out every month to review. And it's, it's hard to review, but you know, the morning. Yes, it is. And it wasn't even that much this, it wasn't even that much this meeting. So, so I'd like to introduce everybody to Mike Lewis. He's our accountant, and he prepares some of our monthly statements, our balance sheet. And, and in the green folder, you will find, you will find that. And that's like our holdings and our total assets. So Mike, if you want, like, you know, do a little synopsis of it, or do you want, do you want to?
Yep. There's a budget versus actual, as of a specific date. And, let me see, what else? I'll go through each one, but I just wanted to give you like an overview. This is a cool report. This is a profit and loss percentage of total income, which I can just go over very quickly. It's probably just more of a supplemental. And the last report is just a statement of cash flows. So, you know, for, for an organization like this, I think these five specific reports are pretty good. If you go back to the first page, this is as of September 30th of 2025. It's a specific time. This does vary from the treasurer's report, which we can talk about in a few minutes. But bottom line is, total assets is $1.9 million, literally the same as it was in the prior year at this time, up $11,000. It's made up of obviously the, the, the cash accounts and pretty much the, the endowment funds. So of that 1.9 million, 1.1 is your, your liquid cash accounts, and your other endowment funds are about 810,000. So there's no questions. I'll move forward on to the, you know, to the liabilities. Of course, there's liabilities. The one that I point out is just, it's a bookkeeping entry, but the deferred revenue, this is just for, for GAAP purposes, where you, you recognize 1/12 of the, of the total levy per month, which the total levy is 774,000. So you just take 1/12 of that, or it's approximately like 69,000. So if you go to the second page, the total equity is $1.7 million. So this is a cumulative, you know, balance sheet item from year to year. It will fluctuate whether or not you have income or loss, but every year seems to be a, you know, very profitable year. And currently, as of September 30th of 25, the net, the net delta is about $76,000. And then if you compare that to what it was last year, it's only down $1,000. So it's the minimus. So pretty much same position. Then you have, on the next page, you have the profit and loss, made up of obviously your, the, you know, the district levy, all your other departmental type revenues, your income, your gain or loss on those endowment funds, the cottage rental. And that, the right now, the year to date, as of September 30th, is $751,000, rounded up, up $55,000 from the prior year. So that's good. I would say that the majority of it, if you look at the, the changes, the net change is probably between the donation versus the Pound Ridge Library Foundation grant, that we're all aware of. So that, that makes up the majority of it. Then you have, obviously, if you go to the expenses, I'm not gonna go through every single one, but you know, it, it just shows you on the second page, I apologize for the formatting, but the, the library services are 138,500 compared to, you know, the, the prior year at 110,000. So up 28,000, office GNA, up 21,000. That, the majority of that is due to the, this equipment purchase for 17,000. So that makes up the majority of that analytical. You have your properties and grounds, pretty straightforward on that. You know, you have the, the foundation grant funds for the, for the, for the property, the children's room renovation, you know, the net delta is up 14,000. So that pretty much makes up the, the majority of that. Then you have your, you have your salaries and benefits, down 13,000, that doesn't really, you know, doesn't really mean that much. It fluctuates, you know, based on timing, payrolls and stuff like that. Then you have your technology, and the, then you have the utilities. So pretty much, I don't want to, you know, keep boring you guys, but bottom line is, you know, the, the net income is that 76,000, what you saw on that first page from the balance sheet.
Mike, just so you know, Mike prepares this every, every month for us. And so it's always in your folder. And, but tonight he's here to, to explain it. Thank you so much. Okay. And, and in case you don't know, you know, but you're all Pound Ridge residents, our library receives a, receives a tax, you're taxed on, we pay, we pay taxes to the library. And we receive 770 something thousand a year, and that's kind of like our, our operating budget. So we, we get, and we get that in two parts. I think there's like a small, something small comes first, like a hundred something.
They give, they give the first 100,000 within the first couple of months, and then they wait for the collection period to end, and then that's when they disperse the difference.
And the number has stayed the same for years. We have not gone to the town and, and asked for an increase. I mean, we can, but we, we just, we haven't. So we've been pretty fortunate that we've been able to operate, you know, with, you know, with the same amount. And, okay, great. Thank you, Mike.
No problem.
So the next thing is, the, oh, you know what, should we do the, I think the treasurer's report was in here. So, so just so you know, there's, there's four officers, president, vice president, treasurer, secretary. So the treasurer, previous treasurer, would prepare a report every, every month. And it's basically just our current holdings and our checking account and savings account. And the treasurer is always responsible for making sure there's enough money in the checking account to pay the warrants, which we're about to, about to approve in a few minutes. And, and then there, we have some CDs. Jennifer, I did see that, I guess because there was like a little gap, you know, not having a treasurer, and then, then some of our checks bounced. We forgot to make a, was that the case? Oh, I thought, I thought I saw that, um, oh, is that what it was? Okay. Because I thought I saw that the checking account had, had a negative balance. And I read that in our report. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna give an issue to Jenna.
We'll discuss the mic soon. But hi, I'm Jenna. Previously, our treasurer, Mike, I think at the last meeting, right, we discussed that he would transfer this money just to kind of cover, to cover us adequately.
Okay. So I, I saw another report in our Dropbox that's different from this one, I thought, tonight, that, yeah, that, and, and, I mean, I thought I, I was reading some. Yes, yeah, there was something, I read that, a few checks were returned, and the checking account had a negative balance because we didn't, we, we forgot to, to transfer the money in time. But, you know, all, all of that was, was taken care of. So, so every month Jennifer includes all the, all the bills that come in from all our, you know, our, our service, you know, things that we, we have to pay. And, and all the people that provide services to us, they bill us. So those, we call those the warrants. And, and I believe, you have the number up there, Jennifer, it was, is it $22,910.88? It seemed like a low number this month, actually. And also to the, for the new trustees, you'll see, if you, if you look at the treasurer's report, you know, you see checking and savings and some CDs, and then you just see things that are called wood, wood capital, wood, wood maintenance. There, there was a family that left us a big endowment, the Samuel Wood family. And there's some, if you, when you come into the library, you see Evelyn La Longwood, her name, they, they dedicated this wing of the library. And they left a sizable endowment to us that's, is used for specific purposes. And that's what that means, WFA. So wood capital, wood maintenance, and general maintenance. And that's the money that, that we have, that we can use for certain things. And when the time comes, we can, we can explain that a little more. So Jennifer, is that the, the number, 22910? Oh, it went up. Okay. Okay. So I just wanted to see, it's 30, like 36890? Okay. I can see it. Is, were there any questions on any of the warrants? Lexi?
Is it possible, sorry, going, going back to this treasurer report, that we had the, a prior treasurer report uploaded to the, the drive? Because I'm looking, okay.
Yeah. So that's the one I read. This is a totally different one that we have in our, in our.
Ah, one's 20, one's October 22nd, 2024, one's 2025. That's the confusion. So the, the, the bounce checks and the insufficient funds.
From a year ago?
Was from a year ago.
Oh, so the one was uploaded. Okay.
This one appears to be the current one, the one that's in our folder.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for catching the date on that. Because that's, I was wondering, I, I know I read it, and I was like, okay. So therefore, also, that treasurer's report said that there was a CD maturing October 24th. So that, that's not the case. Right. It's October 28th. I see it. Okay. All right. Lexi, thank you so much for catching that. So if there are any, to the new trustees, you'll get used to seeing a lot of the same invoices every month from the same people, you know, like if someone does sip and paint, we get an invoice. Or you'll see the landscaping bills, of course, NICEAG and all of that. And, and each month, you know, it, it changes. And so if there's no questions, I would need a motion to approve the warrants. Bob?
I move to approve these warrants in the amount of $30,368.90.
Okay, so have a second. Thank you. All, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. So that was the warrants. Okay. So, so with, you know, with the library board, we have, we obviously have a lot of committees. And so we wanted to, okay. So maybe Mike can, so the warrants are 30,000. And so right now, we have the report in our checking account, we have 81,000, it looks like, right? So is that correct? It looks like we have enough. Do we need to transfer anything right now, Mike? And, and who did that? Yeah. Who transferred 50,000? Was that Mike Clark? Okay, thank you. I agree. I think it's, it seems like there's plenty in there. Okay.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. So Jennifer has on the agenda next committee selections. Do we want to do that first before election of officers? Or, you know, I don't really know what, you know, what do you think would come first, election? What do you think would be better? You want to committees? Okay. So on, on the agenda, let's, we'll, we'll proceed with committees. You're going to see a list on, on this agenda. You'll see finance, technology, governance, legal, PR, program development, HR, long range planning, and I think that's it. So we ask that each trustee serve on a committee or two, and maybe even, even lead one. And, and basically, you know, you could, you could select a committee based on, you know, your strengths, you know, the industry that you're in, what you, what you like. And, but, but, you know, everybody has to be part of it. We'd like, we'd like to have at least, at least two or three people on each, on each committee. Now, with finance, I, who's on finance currently? Anybody present? Bob? You are. Okay. Who was the, was, John Christiana was the head of that. Okay. So he's no longer here. So we have one, one current trustee that's in finance. And so as we pick the committees, the committee members, we also have to pick a committee head. Okay. So is there anyone who's really good in finance? That is not my forte. So. Okay, that, that's, that's great, Bob. I appreciate that. Yeah. I mean, I mean, this, this sheet that, one day I'm gonna go line by line with Mike Lewis on this, what you hand us, because it's, some of it's Greek to me. Okay. So we have Bob. Oh, by the way, we do have a trustee named, named Richard Levon, who's not with us tonight, but he did express interest in the other committees when we, when we get to that. So does any, would anyone like to help Bob on the finance committee? Is there? And maybe we can talk, we can talk about what finance does. Because, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So my observation, I think Mike did a great job, and it's gonna be hard to fill his shoes. Fundamentally, what Mike was doing was reporting sort of a single point in time view of the cash position of the company. And obviously, I would intend to continue doing that. Very similar report to what Mike has. I have some other thoughts about other information that we might develop that might be of interest to the board. I don't think I want to go into the details of that now. It's, we take a little bit more time than we want to spend on this. But it's, it's a fairly straightforward responsibility. I think the value in having one or more additional members of the committee is in case, proverbially, I should get hit by a truck, you know, someone else should know how to go about doing that at work. It's, it doesn't consume a lot of time. It's fairly straightforward.
And, and don't forget, we also have people who advise us, like Mike Lewis is our accountant. Then we also have Westchester Financial Advisors. So, so basically, this is a little bit of banking, like maybe, you know, moving funds around when the CD matures. And a lot of it is all done electronically. So it's not even, you know, that you have to go to the bank. And also, there, there are times when checks have to be signed, where we need two or three signatures. And, you know, usually the officers, if the officers get involved in doing that. But it's, yeah, I think, I, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of numbers, but it's not a lot, a lot of, like, work. Because I think the heavy work is done by, like, Mike and, and Wesley. Heidi, yes, of course, yeah, yes, Heidi.
Quick question about, so for the committees, is there, it's one person per, I mean, one committee per person, or?
No, it's, it could be two or three people on each one. And you can be on more than one.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely be on more. Like, usually people serve on at least two.
Okay.
All right.
Well, then, yeah, I would be more than happy to.
To help finance? That, that would be great, Margaret. That, that would be wonderful.
And also, just to give some grounding to our new members, excuse me, I'm getting over cold. The committees are really like what you put into it, right? Like, there are some months where you might do more, some months where you might do less, you know, certain committees, like long-range planning, maybe it's a little lighter than, say, the parking lot committee was last year, you know, as we made our attempts to, to mitigate that. So I just, yeah, I wanted to flag that. There's no, like, set cadence to a committee. It's really at your discretion.
Yeah. And committees might, you know, get together, you know, during the month, like maybe you have a little, you know, offline meeting or whatever, if you're, you know, you're gonna be presenting something. And, but it's, you know, I think with Bob leading finance, that will, that will be, that will be great. Okay. So we have Valerie. And, you know, if anyone else decides to join, I think we're okay with two people, right? Right, Bob? I think, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. So technology, now this would, you know, this would be great if someone is, is tech savvy. So, and just to give you a little background on technology, you know, we're always trying to stay state of the art here at the library. Also, when we make, we might make technology, when we make purchases for the library, like, you know, like we bought some things for the new children's library, you know, iPads and things like that. We also had discussed upgrading our sound system here. So, so basically, if anyone has a knack for tech, and would like to serve on the technology committee, I don't know who was on it before. I think, again, it was Mike and John. So there's no, there was no incumbent that was on technology as far as we know. No. So this would be a whole new committee. Does anybody, does anybody want to volunteer for that?
I mean, I like the idea of keeping it ad hoc, especially because we just did our renovations. But as, if I am able to take PR chair again, it'll be my third year. But that, I think that's a nice adjacent committee of technology.
Okay. One other thing, whoever gets elected president, generally, they, you know, they participate in all, in all the committees. And Jennifer definitely participates in all the, all the committees also. And I know, and Jennifer is, is pretty good at doing research on, 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 on all things technology that we, and plus Jennifer also is excellent at keeping abreast of what other libraries are doing. Because she's, because Jennifer, you're president of, what is your, and, yes. So Jennifer has a really good rapport with all other, all other directors, to know what they're doing. So getting back to the technology, Jenna, I know you jumped to PR. So is there anyone that would like to take on technology? You, you want to do it in conjunction with, you'll do both?
Yeah, if the rest of the board is okay with that, you're welcome, people to join me. I just think there's adjacencies, right, that cover like digital and social that also in a sense.
Technology. Okay, yes. All right. Would anyone like to join Jenna? I think, I think, you know, and, and you could think about it till next month even. Okay. So we can, you know, start off, and I'm, I'm sure someone's gonna, gonna, gonna join you, Jenna.
I'll join Jenna.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Lexi. Okay. So governance, legal, Rich, who's not here, and Lexi are both current, our governance, and both of them, by the way, have a legal background, right, attorneys. And so totally makes sense that you'd be on governance, legal. Go ahead, Lexi, you have something to say?
I was just going to say that I know that Rich is not here, but he's interested in continuing to chair.
Yes.
And I would like to continue to remain on the committee as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. So public relations is Jenna, she just spoke about that. Jenna, I'm not sure who was with you on that committee. on that committee before. We don't have that, the old list in.
And Selena at times.
But she was. Well, there was a little bit of overlap, I think, between PR and program development.
Yeah.
So. So is anyone, is anyone good at public, well, public relations is, you know, staying in touch with, you know, doing things with the community, maybe getting in touch with the newspaper. You know, on, you know, getting, getting our name out there and, and what we're, you know, and all the wonderful things that we're doing. Is any?
The most valuable asset, if you are on public relations, is keeping your ears open to what your neighbors and friends, when they say, you know what would be great at the library? Or you've always wondered this, but, and get it back to me, if you're the ears of the communities for me.
I, I know we're, we're, we're putting a lot on, on the new trustees tonight. We should have prepared you. Go ahead, Christina.
You know, if that's it, I'm happy to work. I have no, you know, expertise in public relations. And I don't, the, the other thing is that I'm not somebody who's on Facebook and Instagram and I don't know what else is kind of out there. But in terms of being a liaison to the newspaper or, and also, you know, listening to what the public has to say, I'm certainly happy to do.
And I also work at the places you just mentioned, so I can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Christina.
Technology and legal.
And I'm probably going to join another one too. I just haven't made up my mind. Maybe, maybe I should, maybe I should join finance, so I, I get. Maybe learn a little. Okay, so, all right, moving on to program development. So programs, what? Are you gonna bore me with numbers, Bob? I'll join finance. Okay, thank you. Program development is basically just what it says. Our library offers some fabulous programs. So, and we're always looking, looking for ones. And Valerie, I heard that you're, you're here a lot, so you probably know about, you're, you like our library, you know a lot, so you know a lot about our programs. And if you go on our website, you can see everything that we offer. And so we're always, you know, looking for new ideas, bringing in programs, what's popular, what's not. And, you know, so this, and so this is, and so the person who's in program development generally, generally would give a little report each month on, you know, what, what may have been, you know, what was really good the month before, maybe what didn't work and things like that. But it's all about our, our great programs. So that was headed up by Selena Shen, who's no longer here. So we would need a committee chair and, and a member on program development.
Yeah, I would be very interested in joining the program development.
All right.
I'm hearing embarrassing, embarrassingly often, so.
All right.
Two to three times a week, so I'm here all the time.
So that, that's wonderful, yeah. So to have a presence here, you, you really see firsthand what is going on. I don't, if, and like I said, we can, you know, we can think, you can think about this for the next few weeks and next month, we can go over the committees again if you, you know, because you'll, you're, you're, I know you're still learning. Okay, but thank, thank you so much. Go ahead. Okay. Okay.
I'm happy to work on that too, as.
Okay, thank you. And, and this is all subject to change. If you change your mind and say, I think I'd rather join this. Okay, so human resources is just what it says. We, you know, I, I did chair that. And I, I can still chair it. Lexi, because, because we always need someone with, you know, who has a good legal background in, in HR. So Lexi and I work, work good together. But anyone who wants to join it? Okay, thanks, Richard. Okay. Perfect. And if anyone else wants to join, it, you know, doesn't, you know, just for learning purposes, I, I don't mind. Long reach planning is exactly what, you know, when will you see the library? And, you know, a year from now, five years from now. Who was on, so long reach planning, we have nobody currently, it looks like. So is there any? Who was on it? Oh, Bob, oh, okay, Bob, I'm sorry. You, you, do you want to continue on that? Does anyone? Thanks, Marvin. Yeah, it's, it's. What, what? I mean, you know, I don't want the meetings. I'm trying to think. We didn't really have many, a lot of updates on, on long reach planning this. Go ahead, oh, go ahead.
The long range plan is for a term of three years, but it really should be reviewed once a year just to make sure that something's on it that we already accomplished, for example, or something that we want to add, that we don't have to wait three years to, to do that. So it's supposed to be reviewed once a year. So it's a once a year job.
Thank you. So, so, so we review it once a year, but the plan is for three years? Is that, am I understanding that?
Yes.
Okay, so the last time we did that was?
It would be in 2025, so it's 25 through 28 right now.
Okay, all right.
If nothing changes in 2026, it can just stay at 25 to 28. But if we update it, then we would move it to the three year.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, and then the last and most notorious committee, parking improvement. Okay, so I don't know how many of you are familiar with, you know, with our, our parking issues. But, you know, thanks to, to Jennifer and, and our program development team and just, you know, our, our staff, we have wonderful programs and our library is very popular. And, you know, we have this beautiful room for, for art displays and our children's room has been updated and our whole library, it's, it's just a, you know, a, a beautiful place. We have a sensory room downstairs. So, so we, I think that we've come really far in, in just being a, you know, an, an attraction to the community. And with that, you know, we, we don't, we don't have enough parking. And so there has been a, a parking improvement committee, I'd have to say, for many years, many years. And, and that, it's, we've, you know, we're trying to keep the community happy. But at the same time, we do have neighbors who live behind the library and share our, our drive, share a driveway, or they, they enter through the library. And, and we're also at a pretty busy intersection also. So it's, it's been something that's been going on for quite some time, you know. It, it, it meets with, sometimes it meets with favor, sometimes it meets with, you know, and not, not so favorable, with disdain. So it's, it's, it's a big job. It, it, it would be costly. And we have spent a lot of money through the years because we've had to hire consultants. We've hired architects, designers who've come in and looked at our library. We also have easements, so, so, I don't know what to say. So it's a big job. It's a really big job. We haven't decided, you know, none of us yet have collectively have decided what we will do with, with the parking improvement as we, you know, come into 2026. But we, the people who've been on the committee, and I think all of us, all of us on the board, have done a lot of work on it, done a lot of work on it. And, and it's, it's been on five years on the board, but this parking lot was even, you know, before me. So I don't know how many. It goes back, I was, I was gonna say 10, so it's nine, nine years. Richard Esman is, you know, very familiar with it. So Valerie, our previous president, was the chair. And she has, she would be very happy to transition whoever the new committee chair is for parking improvement, to, to, you know, just to show you where we are with it. And it is a lot of, you know, if we decide to proceed, this, this would be, it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of reading and it's a lot of looking at, at, at plans that, that these parking lot designers have done for us. And, and it would also be someone, you know, we would need someone who, you know, is comfortable meeting with, with the planning board also. Because we, eventually, that would be a step if we went in front, if we decided to go in front of the planning board, you know, with whatever our next steps might be. So would anyone like to, since Richard, you're, you're very familiar with it, okay? Parking improvement. Any, anyone else? And I, and I was on it, I was on it last year too, I think, although, so I, you know, I'm willing, I'm willing to help out. And, and this, this could be a committee that, that could be very, very busy or it could be committee that might just evaporate. If that's the correct word. Okay, so, so thank you all for volunteering. Like I said, you could think, you can think about it a little bit more and, you know, and, and offer your services next month. So.
Do you mind if I just read this back to make sure I've got everything correctly for the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so for finance, we have Chair Bob and members Valerie and Anne. For governance and legal, we have Richard Levan as the chair and Lexi as a member. Public relations is Jenna as the chair and Christina is on the committee. Program development, Valerie will chair and Christina's on the committee. Human resources, Anne will chair and Lexi and Rich Esman are on the committee. Long range planning is Bob is the chair and Marvin and Rich Esman are on the committee. Parking improvement, Richard Esman will chair and Bob and Anne are on the committee. And technology, Jenna will chair and Lexi is on the committee. Did I miss anybody? Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now, you know, we, we have to vote for new officers. We, you know, we really can't move forward without, without new officers. And I know, you know, as, as four new members, well, Richard, you know, I know you're new, but not new. It's, so how, how we work it is, we need, we need to elect a president. We need to elect a vice president, a secretary and a treasurer. And what we, what we've done in the past is if anyone is, is interested, you can speak, you know, speak for yourself. If someone wants to nominate someone, we can do that too. But, but we would like to have, you know, four officers, you know, by the, by the end of this meeting. There are two officers, secretary and treasurer, that don't necessarily have to be trustee members. So. So if, if something happens where no one wants secretary, now, I served a sec, I, I've been on the board five years. I've served as secretary for two years. So basically, you know, I can talk a little bit about what secretary does. And it's, it's, it's kind of important because it, it, you know, documents everything that goes on in the meetings. Perhaps I'm a little wordy, but generally, I would take notes. And then I would go back and listen to the Zoom meeting and then I, I would, you know, kind of three steps. And then I, then I would write, write the minutes. We are speaking about using AI to help with writing the minutes. And I think that would be a big help because it, it is a pretty, an, an intense role because we do like to, to be accurate. Because these are minutes that are gonna live in perpetuity for, and Jennifer, Jennifer likes, well, and thank you for the compliment earlier, by the way, Jenna, in, in an email.
Anybody who takes over secretary for Anne will have very big shoes to fill. She does such precise and they're not wordy, they're descriptive. And it's excellent because I constantly have to go back to former meetings and further, and there's never any ambiguity. We know exactly what happened. She did an excellent job.
I mean, I mean, as secretary, I think you kind, you kind of remember the meeting the most because you, you wrote it, then you listened to it, and then you wrote it again. So, so of course, president, you know, runs the meetings and, you know, I don't really, you know, I can't speak for president because I've never been president, but I think, I think the term president is self-explanatory. Vice president, assist the president with, you know, a lot of things, you know, with everything. And then treasurer, well, we kind of know what, what, what the treasurer does. And so I think at this time, I would, I would just like to open the floor to anyone, anyone here who, who would, you know, like to, would like to be interested in running. And then Rich Levon, who, who is one of our trustees, couldn't be here tonight. And he did write, I, 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 he did write a letter in support of, of a candidate for president. And so, so this is how we're gonna work it. I think we'll go around and if someone, should we, should we do one role at a time, like if someone is interested in president? Okay, so. Okay, so let's, I'm just gonna open the floor to anyone who's interested in, in serving as, as president for, for the next year on our library board. Want to speak?
I think I would. Thank you. I think I would like to throw my hat in the ring for president. I did write a few notes, just, I'm familiar with some people here, others are not familiar with who I am. But those of you may remember that I served on the board for six years, of which almost four were president, a little bit less than four. And we had a great time on the board. We really did. We were very, very productive working with Jennifer. We were able to get a lot of the projects through. As I mentioned, the parking lot goes back nine years. I certainly went through that for six of those nine years. And, which is something that I plan on hopefully, you know, working with. But, you know, during the course of my being on the board, I've worked very closely with Anne, with Richard, Jennifer, of course. And I also have the privilege of collaborating very extensively with Bob, who I did not serve on the board with last year, but I'm thrilled to be able to be working with him now. You know, I've cherished all the connections and the teamwork that we've shared. And I'm really looking forward to working alongside everyone on the board. Whether or not I'm elected, it doesn't matter. It's just that I think after reading everyone's bios and the new members and knowing the others, I'm really quite happy to be involved with everybody. So, and I'm just generally excited about what we can accomplish together, whether, again, I'm elected or not.
Thank you, Richard. And if I, if I could, we, we do want to make this letter public. Okay, so Richard Levon couldn't be here. He, he took the time to, to write a note to all of us. Dear fellow trustees, regrettably, I will be unable to attend the next meeting of the library board as we could not come up with a satisfactory week for the October meeting at our last meeting unless one of us yielded to the conflict. I volunteered to miss the meeting so that we could hold a meeting sometime in October. Because I cannot attend this meeting, I will be ineligible to vote for officers. Nonetheless, I wanted my views to be expressed and therefore prepared this statement in support of the candidacy of Richard Esman for board president. I had the pleasure of serving three years previously under Richard's stewardship and quickly became an admirer of his ability to conduct a meaningful, constructive and fair meeting. In short, Richard displayed all the traits necessary to be a successful, effective board president. Smart, knowledgeable, open-minded, engaged and judicious in the use of his authority. Moreover, the amount of time Richard devoted to library matters outside the boardroom was extensive and impressive. He was intimately engaged in and knowledgeable about library issues. Finally, Richard worked constructively and effectively with all members of the staff and particularly Jennifer. Based on the foregoing, I would like to express my strong support for Richard's candidacy for board president without in any way indicating a lack of confidence in the other highly capable board members. Finally, I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the outstanding job that Jennifer and her staff performed week in and week out. They are the stars. We are the conduit. Respectfully, Richard Levon. Nice letter. I like, we are the stars, just. Okay, anyone else interested in, in president? Wow, okay, so, so we heard, we heard that. And I know it's gonna be hard for you guys. You don't know us that well. Okay, vice president. Well, do we want it, do we want each person? Oh, gee, oh, if you, oh, by the way, anyone can nominate anyone else too. This, this was like a, a letter of support. Richard, Richard Levon's not here, so he, so he couldn't nominate and he can't vote. But in the past, we've all advocated for ourselves. So, go ahead. No, we do not. I don't think we need to nominate anyone. Right, right? We, you can, and then if people feel strongly about running themselves and want to speak, we can do that. So we can nominate ourselves basically also. Okay. I know, we're gonna, we're gonna vote all for off. So now it's vice, so don't we want to talk? Yeah, I think we want, I think we want to, oh yeah, it's not gonna, it's gonna be, Krista, it's gonna be a private battle. It's gonna be a private battle. But I think we want to talk about all four roles. Okay, so vice president. Do we have any?
I'd like to nominate Jenna for vice president. And similar to Richard, I just wanted to highlight, I don't know if this will end up being contested or not, but there are a number of reasons why Jenna would be extremely qualified for this role, but the two that particularly come to mind are leadership and forward thinking. When it comes to leadership, Jenna has an incredible ability to run a team. She has a history running brand campaigns and very successful social media campaigns. Now, obviously working at Meta. Leads a team there very efficiently, very effectively. Jen is particularly good at taking advantage of connections. And, and that came out totally the wrong. Effective, what I meant to say was effectively tapping into resources and making sure that all of the talent that we have in this room, in this library, within the community is used efficiently and effectively. She's very, very good at connecting people and ideas and getting things done. In terms of looking forward, the library, sitting here today, I've only been on the board, but already this is not the library that I saw in my first meeting this time last year, which is incredible. And certainly not the library it was five years ago, 10 years ago. When we look at some of the things, getting rid of the DVD collection, certainly the numbers are astonishing on circulation, print versus audiobooks. The world is moving a certain way and we continuously punch above our weight and we need to make sure that we are continuing to do so. I think we really pride ourselves on that. That means meeting the community where it is through things like our incredible social media presence, which I know Jennifer and her team work really well, or really hard at and have done incredible things with. It's making sure that we're out in the town. We can have the most incredible programming of all time, but if the community doesn't know about it and isn't using it, then we're not being as efficient in serving the community the way we best can. So Jenna is absolutely the person for the role and I strongly nominate her.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lexi. I'd like to nominate Anne. I, again, I've worked with Anne for a number of years and I think she's highly qualified in all aspects of library management. Certainly the board and being an officer. And I think she is by far the best qualified.
Thank you. And if I can expand on that. So this will be my last year on the board, my sixth year. And as I mentioned before, I've been secretary for two years. And I, and I would, you know, in my final year, I would like, I would like to be an officer. But if Jenna is, is, and thank you, Richard, by the way, if Jen is interested in vice president, I'm, I'm happy to stay on as secretary as long as I get my help from AI. And I'm gonna, and Jennifer, you and I have talked about this and I think the technology team and, and then Selena Shen, a previous trustee, had also sent me a software that could help do this because it is secretary. But if anyone else is interested in secretary, don't be shy, new trustees. I know, you know, the first, just so you know, the first year I was on the board, I was like a deer in headlights, you know, just trying to, you know, just all the reading you have to do and all the preparation and catching up on everything. And it will take a while, but I'm, I'm really, you know, happy to have you here and thank you. So does anyone else? So just tell me about, here we, here we go with secretary. Go ahead, Jenna.
Then is of interest to you. I think you'd be great. You only have the year left. I have two more years, two and a half at this point. Yeah, so if that's your preference, I'd be happy for you to take that.
So, I'm, I'm, you know, I enjoy being an officer and, you know, whether it's vice president or secretary, and I, I think you would make a great vice president too. So why don't we just, this is, this is like we're, we're our own little family.
I know we are, but Anne, it's also your last year. I have more time if I.
That's okay. It doesn't make a difference what, what office I hold. I think it's, I think it's just great that we'll, I think the most important thing is that we work together and, okay, so now treasurer. And we, we know that that's not me. Okay. Based on my previous comments.
My, my thought is that the two positions, the, the treasurer as an officer and the chairman of finance committee, those two positions are so closely aligned that I would feel very comfortable offering my services as treasurer as well as chairman of that committee.
I'd like to support Bob for that as well. Bob is, is an incredible individual and he is very special when it comes to finances. He's incredibly knowledgeable and there isn't anyone more suited to it than he is.
I think, I think you're very detailed too, Bob. And you are knowledgeable and Bob has, just from your background, having your own company too, okay. I don't mind if there's more, more people who want to get on that. Okay, so Jennifer, what would you do on that balance now?
Balance are actually in your packet. Just want to reiterate, this is just for a one year gig. You're not signing up for three years or anything like that.
Yes, all of these are for one, are for one year. And, and like Jenna said, she's got two more years left. I only have one year left. Richard, you're, all, all of our new trustees are three-year terms, correct? Okay.
So once you fill out your forms, if you can just fold them over and I'm gonna come around and collect them and I will tally them and make a announcement at the end of the.
So do we do the results right now? Like there's a drum roll and? Or do you need to go in another room?
I just need a couple of minutes to tally the votes. Yeah, so if you want to move on to the next item.
We don't want to put it on the spot. Okay. So next is committee updates. There was, there's probably not too many updates right now. We already went on to finance. I mean, you know, Mike, you kind of did that and, technology, I mentioned what technology does. So, you know, this, you know, we really don't have an update. So, so we just went through it. Jenna, your PR, I don't know if you have a quick update on PR and I have a little bit of a quick update on HR.
Well, Anne, I do think as new technology chairperson, I would like to bring.
Oh, okay, I forgot.
But, but, but real, I do think.
Maybe we should, when we, when we update the committees in the future, we should put technology and PR next to, you know, like right underneath each other. So you can do both at one time.
Sure. I do think we should bring up the Zoom topic and I'm happy to like give a bit of a history there. To my understanding, and you can validate, we didn't.
We was talking about our, our meetings are, are on Zoom. As you can see, we have some people attending. And by the way, our libraries, our, our meetings are public. People from our community could come and sit. We, you know, we have chairs here, some people. So, so we've been doing Zoom now. I'll let you take it from here, Jenna, but.
Yeah, during the pandemic, the library began allowing Zoom as an attendance option. And of course you have to be here in person to have your presence count. You know, we have some people that join, but like Anne said, you know, the, the doors are open. People are welcome to come in person. And the, the last board we were consistently discussing removing the Zoom option because it gets a little distracting and more times than not, as you see with the mics, it becomes a little bit cumbersome. And we wouldn't need to use the microphones if we didn't have Zoom.
Mics are for, for the Zoom because we could all hear each other without this. Yeah.
Yeah, and since there's, yeah, I mean, the times have changed, obviously, since, since the pandemic began and we just are, wonder if it might be sacred to have the meetings in person again. I'm, I'm in support of it.
You know, everything that's said in this, in these meetings is, you know, it, it's on Zoom. So, well, it's, our, our meetings will probably be recorded anyway in case anyone wants to listen to them, right, Jen? I think we were talking about still recording them.
Certainly can be. We can record it without broadcasting it.
Correct. So.
So we have the minutes. The minutes document everything.
And we, we did, we did this during COVID. Well, the, the only like maybe one advantage to Zoom would be if, if a board member could not be at the meeting, you know, like maybe they're on a business trip, they can't attend, but they could still, you know, they can listen in. They would not have a voting right, but then again, the same thing, they could listen to the recording the next, just as easily the next day.
And just a little bit of history, we did explore extensively other technological options that would alleviate the need for the mics and looked at a variety of proposals with Jennifer's lots and lots of research and help. We had folks come in and talk about AV solutions. The bottom line is it would be quite expensive to do anything that would obviate the need for the mics. We looked into things in the ceiling and whatnot, just ones that sit on the desk. But we felt, and at least at that time, the board felt, that given that the primary use for the mics and, and really the only, the only issue that would be solved with moving forward with such a plan was this board meeting, that it wasn't worth pursuing other options. So those have been explored. As a board member who does travel for business frequently and is one of the excuse absences, I personally find joining the Zoom meetings helpful. But we've also had executive sessions where I've just phoned in and listened just the same and been able to contribute, obviously without voting, but, but able to participate. And I think to the extent we have a board member and that's really the, the circumstance in which I, I feel it is helpful. Maybe that's perhaps a little selfish. I, I, I think phoning in is just as effective for those purposes. I am however interested and would like to open the floor if we can do that to the folks that are on Zoom. Obviously, folks are welcome to join here in person. And I think we generally have somebody from, which I, I believe we do tonight as well, somebody from the foundation on via Zoom. I would welcome any thoughts or commentaries from the, from the public in terms of turning off the Zoom and any opinions you may have on that.
Also have someone from the newspaper, usually that's on Zoom also listening in. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but I thought you did say in a previous meeting because, because you're so familiar with what other libraries are doing. Not too many of them are using Zoom anymore, right?
One of the very few who have it on Zoom or one of the very few who record it, who missed it. Yeah.
And I'll add my disclaimer that as the resident attorney in the room, I, I am personally adverse to recording anything and keeping any sort of video. Don't need for liability purposes, not that there are any presently, but that is my general advice on the topic.
What, how many people tune in? And so I checked our YouTube channel and the answer is in the single digits.
I think this would, this would obviously require a motion. We need any more discussion on it. Okay, maybe Jenna, if you hadn't. Someone who is on Zoom wants to say anything.
I'll give a five to 10, 10 second pause.
Hi, this is Sonia Friedman. I'm dialing in from the foundation board. We, but, you know, just to continue our good partnership with, with the library board of trustees, we like to have a participant join all the monthly meetings. It's more convenient usually to, as for us to, to zoom in, but of course we defer to, to your team's preferences.
Thanks, Sonia. I just wanted to draw your attention to the chat. Neil Rents from the recorder is asking, could the meetings be on YouTube even if it's not broadcast live? And it's for you guys.
They would not be on YouTube if not broadcast live is my understanding because we would not be, well, I guess there was a proposal that we could record them, but I think to record them, we would still need microphones, which would be the same, the same issue. So if we're looking to get rid of the microphones, which I do personally feel are an impediment to discourse in these meetings and slow us down, then we would not be able to do that.
And as you pointed out, everything is documented in the minutes.
Oh, yes, I was just gonna say the minutes would still be posted on the website, right? Yeah.
Of course, yes. So if, hi Marilyn, if I could just, Marilyn Tinter, if you see her name up there on Zoom, she's, she's a member of her staff here. And she joins our meetings on Zoom. But Marilyn would have the opportunity to listen the next day, correct, Jennifer? So she, yeah, because, you know, I would hate for Marilyn to miss the meeting, but she could be updated the next day. Hi Marilyn.
Hi. My thought, my thought aside from myself is that we are a town, we're a municipal library now and our town, whether one or 100 attends their meetings, they are transparently on Zoom. It's just a thought.
Does anyone else have any other comments or thoughts, concerns?
Do we, do we feel prepared enough that we could, that we could make, make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion that we remove the Zoom, but still record the meetings and continue on.
I think what we'll do is we can use Zoom to record without it broadcasting and, but we would still need the microphones. So, yeah.
So then I'd like to make the motion to discontinue Zoom and recording the meetings. All in, anyone second?
A second. Let me just bring, can I just bring up, so wait, this is gonna go back to secretary now. Whoever the secretary is, how would they, if they wanted to go back, you know, oh, I didn't, I didn't quite get that. Because I always use the Zoom as, as a backup, but because it was available. But guess what? Years ago, secretary didn't, didn't have that available to them.
So, so what I would recommend is there's a text, a speech to text feature in any Word type of a application. So just bring your laptop or your tablet and keep it next to you and that will pick up. So you'll have a transcript, not necessarily a recording, but a transcript of everything that was said there. Sometimes get it, you know, a little wrong, whatever, but that would be as close to as recording as you could get.
I'm just, correct me again if I'm wrong, Jennifer. When people go to our, our library website right now, they, there, there is a link to the recording. So anyone from the community could go. I don't think we were always doing that, by the way, were we?
Just since COVID started, when we started zooming our meetings, yes, every, every meeting we've had since then should be loaded through YouTube.
Okay, all right.
This is obviously a big decision for us and we change the way people can participate. I heard a couple of very good ideas. I, I agree with the difficulty of having discourse when you're trying to pass microphones around. It's disruptive. Jennifer's idea about using text to speech sounds like a very good one. But we all know that that doesn't always work perfectly well.
The, the microphone might necessarily pick it up.
My suggestion is that we not vote tonight, but we try Jennifer's idea to see if we can get an adequate recording of the meeting and use that for secretary purposes and for other reasons. And then I have a question. And then I have a question, whether that recording would be available to anyone other than the board members? Or just to the, I don't know who would have access?
I don't think, I have serious concerns about liability and having anything AI-generated made available to the public.
My last call out here, and I know Jennifer is best suited to speak to this, but, I mean, watching her always try to set this up week or month after month, and all the difficulties, and then it drops. And sometimes we've had hot calls. I do think it would take a lot of that off her. That's worth as well. So happy to table it, and let's think about it, and all come back together.
Lexi, the AI assistant would just be for use for the secretary to compose. It wouldn't be for anyone else. It would just be, it's a backup.
In an ideal world, I would be comfortable with either an AI transcription, as Jennifer was suggesting, or even a voice, there's applications that do voice notes. True, will it pick up everyone in the room? Probably not. But I think for purposes of doing the minutes, it should be enough of an assist. I know that, as I'm sure many of us use these professionally, these kinds of softwares as backups. But I would be far more comfortable and in favor of that than having the Zoom and the microphones and all of that. And I think we could work out an effective technological solution for the secretary as a piece of, just like no one, my notepad is not being made available to the public. I think it would be the same kind of thing. The secretary's notes don't get available. And if you're using some technological aid, same thing, that's for your own use in creating the minutes. The minutes obviously go on the website and are publicly available. But in terms of our obligation under the open meeting laws and whatnot, the meetings are public. Anyone can attend. The minutes are up in a timely fashion, as everyone's pointed out extremely thorough. And also, I'd like to just point out that the board is generally very available and happy to talk to the community. So to the extent there is any points of clarification or any questions that come up following a meeting, everyone in the public should feel free to reach out to any of us to discuss or get further clarification.
If I could just say, you know, it's no secret, we do the Zoom every week, and we never have more than two or three people joining on Zoom. It's not like there's 100 people in the community, you know, listening. It's just a few people.
I just wanted also to make a clarification between having AI-assisted minutes created and having AI help us record them. Two separate things, I believe. I mean, I think it goes against Robert's Rules of Order to have an AI, we can't even have an AI representative, you know, taking notes for someone. I'd really like to get Lexi to jump in on that.
If I said that or implied that I misspoke, I meant having AI assist in some sort of transcription that serves as an aid to the secretary for the purpose of creating the official minutes. But the secretary is the one who creates the minutes.
Thanks. I just want to make sure it's a clear distinction there, because we don't allow.
I understand, right.
Library Director Association, for example.
Assist, correct.
Okay, let's hold it till next time. We can all discuss as needed, and in the sake of time, continue on. And I have no PR committee update.
I'm also looking, and Selena did also send me something, and I will look into that also. I don't know what it is, but it's something that, and apparently, there's a lot of these apps out there that can help you. So between legal and technology, we'll, you know, hopefully, whoever the next secretary is, we'll figure it out. Okay.
Would it make sense to have two or three different programs going at the same time and see which one seems to be more accurate to help the secretary?
We could, but the right type of tool, we could also prompt it to create different styles of transcripts. I think it's, yeah, I work on this a lot, but we should prompt it for what we want. Like, yeah, trust me, just to make everyone's lives, please trust me. Thanks.
So, okay, so nothing in program development. Human resources, I just have, I have one announcement. I don't know if Jennifer will want to expand or then, or even, we don't have to do an executive session tonight. We recently had a full-time employee decide that she would rather get back to part. She started a part-time, went to full-time, took the civil service test. And, you know, due to also graduate studies that she is involved in, she decided to go back to part-time. With that, with that happening, that means that we need to do, you know, do a little bit more, we need to add to our staff to cover the hours that this person is vacating. So Jennifer is working on that, and I don't know, you know, if you want to talk about that in your director's report. I don't know if you included that.
You pretty much covered it all, because we have sort of dissolved the full-time role, because we've given Morgan a part-time, we have to hire more part-time people to fill those gaps. And everybody who's currently on the staff is working the maximum number of hours that they're allowed to under the civil service, which is 17 and a half hours per week, which is a two-day week. So we are looking to add the two empty spots, and which is when you break up one single full-time role, it breaks into three part-time roles, two, two, and one day a week. I'm also asking civil service to add additional so that we can have substitutes. I've asked people to fill in for, you know, evenings here or weekends there, whatever. And nobody seems to be able to do anything except their scheduled time, so I really need someone that can be a floater. I'm sorry to interrupt. May I suggest that we continue this conversation in an executive session? I think it's probably more appropriate.
So I'll, okay, so I'll call for an executive session. And also, with the library opening seven days now, it's caused a need for more staff also. But like Jennifer said, you know, part-timers are only allowed a certain amount. So I'm calling for an executive session after this meeting. Okay, thank you.
We had skipped legal, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can give a quick update, which is really a non-update, we are continuing to look at. And a question was raised about our bylaws and the way they were entered into when they were codified in the statute and how they have been amended since. So we are working on squaring up just to the extent that there are any future amendments to the bylaws, that everything is in accordance with the procedure as it's supposed to. Richard and I are working on that along with Jennifer, and we continue to work on just nailing that down. Hope to have an update by the next meeting.
Thank you, Lexi. And so I think there's probably nothing, you know, no updates for Long Beach planning and parking improvement. So we can go to the director's report, correct, Jennifer? Okay. By the way, new trustees, something that might interest you in the Dropbox every month are the statistics that you can read, like what's checked out, like what type of books are checked out the most? And then Jennifer also, or Alan, I think you do a lot of this too. It's just pretty interesting to see what the trends are and what's being checked out, and also how we compare other libraries, you know, like, I think generally, is fiction the most? And we also give reports on attendance at every program also, correct? And that's good to look at also, to see what programs are more successful than others and maybe why there were only two people at one program, maybe it could have been bad weather or whatever, but it's. Lexi, okay.
I don't think that I saw this earlier when I was looking. It would be really helpful.
It's not in the Dropbox. Jennifer, you don't generally put it in earlier in the day?
I don't. I put it in at the end because I'm always adding to it, so.
Okay.
Let's do, is the slideshow under slide? Anyway. Okay, great. So first, just wanted to. Success of our table at the Harvest Festival. Thank you to Marvin Markowitz and Chrissy Sassy Lerner for being there to represent the library, as well as Ann and Avani, our facilities manager, came along as well. We signed up 18 people for new library cards, which was a record for us for outside, and distributed our promotional materials, tote bags, Pound Ridge Library notepads, which we got for our new trustees, and everyone got our new magnet with our new hours on it. And the Kids Craft, which was autumn-themed, make-your-own bookmarks and Beaded Jewelry was such a hit. I ended up staying late after all of everybody else had cleared out their tables, because everyone was having such a great time. So it was fantastic. It's really important when trustees show up for these things to show their dedication of the library and to the rest of the community. And lucky you, you have another opportunity to do so, because the Halloween Walk is coming up on Friday, October 31st, from four to six, and we'll have a table there. So come on down, hang out, hand out some candy. And we've also got little sensory balls that we're handing out to the community, which were such a big hit last year. So please feel free to come on.
Last year was about 80 degrees, if you remember. Remember how it was like?
Summer night.
Such a great fall. Yeah, it's been great. Oh, I wanted to report back the success of the Great Pound Ridge Bookworm Hunt. In order to promote our open seven days a week, I hid seven different color bookworms in seven different locations throughout the town of Pound Ridge. And we put an ad in the newspaper with the map and with these hints as to where you can find them. We had over 25 participants, and those are only the people that came in to claim their prize. I have a feeling a lot more people did, because I had to keep going and replenishing all the bookworms in the different places. So that was really popular. I'm going to see if I can't make an adjustment on that, do something for it next year as well. All right, I just want to remind everyone who's on the board and to new trustees, you have a year to participate in the required trustee education. You just sign onto a webinar, anything that sounds interesting. It might be on, depending on which committee you're on, you might find something that's specific to that or something you didn't know about libraries you'd like to learn more about. So in the Dropbox there, every single month, you'll find a folder called the Trustee Education folder, which has links to all of these webinars, as well as a form that you can fill out. If you didn't get a certificate at the end of the webinar that has every information, just fill it out. I went to the seminar on this day for this many hours and send it to me, and I track that information. Okay? All right, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about our technology. It's been a fantastic year. We have made tremendous progress in modernizing the library's technology, breaking away from Westchester Library's IT system, partnering with our own vendor for faster support, stronger security, and significant cost savings. We upgraded our Museum Pass reservation system to a sleek, intuitive platform. We launched a new marketing platform that improved the look and reach of our communications and introduced a modern online events calendar that makes discovering and registering for programs effortless. Together, these upgrades represent an almost complete modernization of our technology infrastructure. Our website is the one piece that hasn't yet caught up with everything else we've accomplished. Our website is the library's digital front door. It silently communicates who we are before anyone walks through the door. Is it modern? Is it user-friendly? Is it reliable? And is it relevant? Right now, the answer is no. It's basic, it's functional, but not intuitive, not modern. It doesn't fully reflect the quality and professionalism of the Pound Ridge library experience. And when the online experience feels dated or confusing, people subconsciously associate their frustration with the library itself. It's time for our digital presence to reflect the excellence of the service we already provide. That's why I'm recommending Library Market as our new website partner. Most websites, including our current WordPress website, are designed for businesses and retrofitted to accommodate needs. Library Market is different, because it was built specifically and solely for libraries by librarians and library IT professionals. Its design anticipates how patrons actually navigate, what they look for first, and how they expect information to flow. It's not a corporate website retrofitted for a library. It's a purpose-built, digital gateway designed to feel as welcoming as the library itself. I want to highlight that we already have experience with Library Market's products. Our new online events calendar is a Library Market product, and it has been a tremendous success. You can see here the striking difference in appearance between the old events calendar in WordPress and the new Library Market version, and the improvement in functionality is just as transformative. There were initial concerns that introducing a new system and moving to Drupal would bring a painful learning curve for both staff and patrons, but it's been smooth sailing from day one. It's far easier to use for both patrons and staff, and we're now able to offer automatic registration and confirmation notifications via SMX text, which was a much-requested enhancement from patrons, as well as automatic waitlist management, all presented in a sleek, modern interface that fits the image we want to project. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, the transition was seamless, and I anticipate the same positive experience if we were to move forward with the Library Market website platform. All right, so let's talk cost. So Library Market offers two implementation options. The full-service build is $24,900, which includes complete content loading by their team. The collaborative build, which is what I'm recommending, is $15,000. Their designers create the framework and main pages, and our staff loads the remaining content. It does not require technical expertise, it's just more time-intensive for us, and it saves nearly $10,000 while delivering the exact same product. Annual hosting, maintenance, and support are $2,000. Thanks to a $15,000 grant from Senator Shelley Mayer, we could reallocate funds from the Programs and Services line to the technology budget covering this expense entirely. The project is more than a website refresh. It's a strategic investment in our library's future. It aligns our digital identity with the exceptional in-person experience our patrons already expect, reinforcing the library's reputation as professional, welcoming, and forward-thinking. It's time our digital presence fully reflects who we are and what this library stands for. Thank you for considering my request.
Jennifer, thank you. I saw that the proposal that was uploaded to the drive was dated February 2025.
Yes.
Is this the proposal that the board had previously considered?
Yes, it is. I actually spoke with the owner of the company. They actually just merged with Library IQ. It's a very innovative company in the world, and as well as Orange Boy. And he did confirm that those prices are still valid.
Aside from a new composition of the board, is there any substantive development since the previous board thoroughly considered this proposal and decided against it that we should be aware of?
I don't believe the board actually voted against it. I believe it was the Technology Committee or the Ad Hoc Committee, the Website Committee, asked us to perform surveys to get feedback from the community as far as their impression of the website, which I'm happy to share with you. I have also taken it as a personal project to interact with patrons to see what is their experience. And so I've kept records of what they said, where their pain points are, what it is that they would hope to see if we were to add anything to our website. And I think that's more substantive than what we actually captured in the survey. So happy to share that.
Yes, I think that would be really helpful data to help us evaluate. And the other question I had was, I know the calendar had been a big improvement and something that was discussed when we previously discussed some of the pain points with the website. The calendar jumped out as a point for improvement, and clearly, there has been tremendous improvement there. What do you see as the biggest benefits for moving forward with this proposal now that the calendar issue has been resolved?
Well, like, as I explained, I just don't feel that it's intuitive and that it's presenting the library as an innovative, modern. and that it's presenting the library as an innovative, modern, complete package of the way that, that we would do it through Library Market. The, when we started working with the events calendar through Library Calendar, it was day and night. It's always been a struggle. We had to do everything one by one by one rather than in groups, for example. And it took so much time for the staff, just absolutely pointless. And it, it just isn't, I'm going to expect the exact same thing because when I look at the other libraries that, that are like the Westchester Library System libraries that are using Library Market for their website, when I go in and type in, say, for example, on Google, Chappaqua Library, minutes 2000, you know, January 7th, 2014, it brings me immediately down. If you tried to do the same thing in our website, if you weren't familiar with it, you are really looking and searching and everything. And that's one of the things that I gathered from talking with our patrons. They looked up things, I remember specifically Sensory Room, brought back 11 pages of hits and the actual page for Sensory Room didn't come up until page four. Constant things like donating of books, donating of money, get a library card. These things don't come up easily. It's something like 30 pages came up for when you put, put in, how do I get a library card if you don't know where to look? So what I'm looking for is a more intuitive website, if that makes sense.
You mentioned the Chappaqua Library. Which other libraries in the Westchester system have switched to libraries?
So there's Scarsdale, New Rochelle, Croton, Chappaqua and Bedford Hills. I think there's one more. I think there's eight. And then in addition to that, almost all of the Westchester member libraries use the Library Calendar product.
No, I just wanted to thank Jennifer for raising this. I also would like to see data. I know that we, it feels like we talked a lot about this earlier this year and kind of came to the conclusion that because we have like the fiduciary responsibility to the community, it just felt like a lot. I'm just going to propose, obviously while you prepped out and anything else that maybe we table this to next time. I know that also personally, like I would have loved to read about this in the director's report and reviewed it earlier. So yeah, I personally need some time to process this.
Yeah, obviously I need some time. I just wanted to point out that it was when I brought it to you originally, it was at the $25,000 price point because I didn't know going in how the system worked and whether I'd be able to do the content loading. And now that I see how effortless it is, I say, we've got this. Absolutely. We don't need that $10,000. And we do have the $15,000 grant from Shelley Mayer. So really, I think that really does.
That's what I wanted to ask. That grant could be used at our, what is that grant?
It's for services and books. And then what we would do is reallocate, this is where you come in from our, now currently our budget for adult ser, adult programs, for example, is $60,000. So far, we spent $40,000 and we have, you know, several, only, you know, a couple more months in the year. So that's another place that we could, you know, it's just a matter of moving money from one line item to another. But it's, it's, you know, it's kind of no cost basically. We currently, our annual cost with WordPress through CyberOptic is our manager now, is 1,500 a year. And every time we call them to make an adjustment or, you know, to our retrofits, you know, we would like it to do this, we would like it to do that, we're charged. So the 2,000 annual with Library Market translated into 4,000 with CyberOptic because of all the little changes that had to be made along the way.
I've had the same experience using the Pound Ridge Library website that you described, Jennifer. So I stopped using it. It's very frustrating. I have two other questions though. The difference between 24, 9 and $15,000 is not of great concern to me. I'm more interested in if we go with your recommendation of $15,000 for the collaborative build. That means we're taking on work. And I'd love to see an estimate of how many hours and who would do the initial build? How long will that take? And what would be your estimate for maintaining the website with currency expressed in terms of hours and who would be doing that? And then finally, I, I agree with what I think I heard from Jenna. I have difficulty reacting strongly enough to vote for something when it's presented real quickly. I'd like to read it ahead of time or postpone vote to the next meeting.
Absolutely. I wasn't expecting you to make a call in the moment. So sorry if I was confusing about that. As far as maintaining it weekly or monthly or going forward, whatever, is something that I do now and it's very frustrating. You're working in WordPress. As I said, it's retrofitted. It wasn't meant to be like for libraries. It, it doesn't work. We make it work. We shoehorn ourselves into the existing, you know, holes where it is. So as far as the content loading, we have a very competent worker in Morgan. And I think she would be excellent at working on getting the back stuff. But we don't have a very huge amount that necessarily would need to be accessible through the website as far as we don't have 50 years worth of minutes, for example. We're not going to upload, you know, all of that kind of stuff. It's, it'll just be maintaining it. It's going to be so much easier going forward than it is currently. It's going to be a time saver. It's going to be streamlined. It's just, it's, it's going to be much, much better for, for the staff, but more importantly, for the patron experience. And that's where it's really driving me. Yeah. It's, it's not, I'm coming in because I want to make, you know, our jobs easier or, you know, quicker or anything. It's, it's the patron experience. It's my main priority. But of course, it does go hand in hand with the, because you want your workers to be spending time engaging with patrons, not engaging with the computer constantly to try and make it fit.
One quick thing? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Well, from a user's point of view, I have also found the library website to be pretty frustrating. I think most recently I was trying to look into signing up for the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. And I had the librarian, we were both looking at the website together, trying to figure out where it was to sign up. We could not figure it out. So I ended up signing up with Bedford Village, not Pound Ridge. So that was.
Oh, that just.
I just put in and I know it's there. But also I would like to find out more information about like the financials about if we were to switch to a different website or company and where would we be getting this? Would it be just uploaded and we would look into it on, where you would provide the information? Or would there be an actual, another like full discussion? Because it seems like it would take a while.
You're referring to the proposal, the Library Market proposal, which will be in your Dropbox. And I am so happy to bring the owner of the company in to do a demo on Zoom for us to explain exactly how it works. We can keep it, you know, at whatever level of depth you want to go into. And he does a really great job of selling the, the product because it kind of sells itself. It's amazing.
I think this can be an action item for the technology committee and anyone else who wants to join outside of the board meetings. I will flag that previously our main concern is that if you're going to invest in having an amazing new website, we would also, I mean ideally invest in like a, a brand identity update, like the logo and freshening it up to match the renovation. So I think just speaking on behalf of myself and a few other board members, like it, it stood to be more money. So I just want to make sure that we have an accurate view all in on what like the ideal situation would be next time.
Yep. Because Jenna's right. Basically, the, the thing that prompted this is you're supposed to update your web, the best practices is you update your website every five to seven years. We're at six years. And again, I'm hearing the complaints and everything. So Ann and I were talking about it, but the only thing that I, I do like our current logo, the little cupola. What I don't like is the colors of the cupola. Ann and I were saying we like the, the, the dark green without the yellow. And it's kind of a, I think, kind of garish, green, obnoxious yellow. But there's a third part of the company, there's Library Market, which is the website, Library Events Calendar, and then there's the branding portion where they can help you come up with a new logo. And then they would also, you want to match the colors of your branding in your website. So as you can see in this, in our events calendar now, everything is green and yellow. So we would want to make sure that everything is cohesive and branded in the, in the website. That would absolutely go hand in hand, Jenna. 3,500 is the number that they quote us for that.
But technology providers are not often the best people for graphics and creative. We have to keep in mind that a brand identity update, we have all of this collateral, all of these outside materials. It's a much more expansive investment than just looking at the website. So I just want to make sure that if that's something we wanted to pursue, you know, maybe there's a different graphic designer that would be better suited for that and would, they work well together. I just think we need to take a fuller, a fuller look again.
Jennifer, what's the cost of maintaining the current calendar?
The current calendar? It's 1,500 a year for our website partner now, which is CyberOptic. And then each change that we make, we're built for that. Whereas with Library Market, all that support and enhancements and others, I don't think we need any. But if we did, it's all included in that $2,000 number.
I really like the suggestion you made of having the, the vendor come in and speak to us and demo some of this. I would ask that we table this for a discussion among the board and get cohesion on exactly what we'd like to fix and what would be most helpful from the vendor before we bring them in. We've had the unfortunate experience of having vendors come in and then not being aligned as a board in terms of what we were looking for. And I'd like to, to make sure we're as, as efficient as possible with their time when they do come in. So perhaps we table this until the next meeting, have a broader discussion. In addition to the data that we talked about, it would be, personally, I would find it tremendously helpful if we could get a comparison in writing just of what our current costs are, how it breaks down, how this would, how this compares. I know there's the slide in the director's report, but to really understand the financial impact here would be tremendously helpful. Not to add to your list, Jennifer. With any other questions?
Just on advisory, I just, the, you had mentioned that we could use grant money for this, correct? And how much was that?
15,000.
What is the grant period from?
We haven't received it yet. It'll be here in January.
Okay. So you have up until, was it January through December 31st?
Right.
Okay. All right.
Do you know what they did in terms of, you know, rebranding and doing, you know?
Well, first of all, I called each of them and asked what their experience has been and all of them were glowing recommendations. They loved working with the workers there. I love working with the workers there. And they say, they, it was one of the best moves they have ever made. The partnering with Library Market was absolutely the way to go again because it's dedicated to libraries. I don't know whether they chose to, their content, you know, or not, or whether they rebranded their website. I know that Yonkers did. That was the one I forgot. Yonkers Library did use them both for rebranding the logo and, and using for the website and the calendar. They were the full package.
And for all of us, we could check out these different.
Yes, I think. Chappaqua has a really interesting logo. I bet that one was an outside advertising firm.
No, I'm not, I'm not. Check out other, you know, you're all welcome to go check out other, I, I, I like, I'll just, you know, what Bob said and, and Valerie. It's not a very user-friendly website.
It's not. And the thing is even within, if we go with Library Market, it's very, very customizable. The one that Chappaqua uses versus the one that Bedford Hill uses versus one that Scarsdale uses, they're all completely different. We can make it look however we want to.
Good. So this.
We can make it work for us, you know, that works for our community.
This and obviously Jennifer has her eye on that 15,000 coming in January.
Well, and yeah, I mean, they're, it, it is definitely within our budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What else in your director's report?
That's it. Thank you.
That's it. Oh, okay. So, oh, what about, did we want to, I, we can just mention that I did, I did make the annual, do you want to? The Wood Memorial or do we?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I wrote that down. Just for the minutes, if you could just explain.
Okay. So earlier you saw that we, we, we got an endowment from, from the Wood family. And, and in that original endowment, the family made a request that, you know, this might sound a little odd, but they made a request that, that someone from the library board visits the cemetery every year where, where the Wood family is interred, if that's the word. So, so once a year we visit, it's Kinsaco Cemetery. And I, I did that visit the other day and we just take pictures and, and it's not like we report it back to anyone anymore, but because we, we just honor the fact that the family asked us to do that. So I, I did do that the other day. It, it used to, but we found out last year, no one.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, it doesn't exist anymore. Yeah. Okay. So you're welcome. Okay. So that's, so is there any, we're on to, if I could just bring up one, one last thing. We have a facilities manager. Her name is Bonnie Schwartz. She's a former trustee member. I want to know where we're going to, will we be incorporating her report every month in our?
I believe it's in the, the Dropbox.
It's in the drop. So it's in the, it is? I didn't, I didn't see it. Okay. It's there?
Okay. Is it there?
Yeah. I, I didn't see it tonight for some reason or earlier today. So we, we get enough, there's an update every, every month about what's been going on, like, you know, anything that needs to be repaired, anything. So Bonnie Schwartz is our facilities manager. And so that's there. Okay. So let's see. What time is it right now? Sorry. It's 9:20. Is there any new business? Okay. Any public remarks? Okay. So then we are adjourned at.
Do you want to read the election of the officers?
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah. I guess we need to do, yeah, we can't do that in private. We need to do a, okay. So at 9:20, we are now announcing the election of officers. Okay.
Okay. So for president, we have Rich Esman. For vice president, we have Jenna. Treasurer is Bob and secretary Anne. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Okay. So the meeting is officially adjourned at, at 9:21. We're going to take like a two minute break and we're going to go into an executive session. I promise we'll try to make it as quick as possible. This meeting was a little bit longer because we had elections and everything and a lot of explanation. But, but trust me, we try to make them as, you know, we'll try to keep them as short as possible.